Can I talk?
You may.
Okay, the town council, the regular Corder Madara Town Council meeting for Tuesday, April 7th, 2020 is now in session. Would the town clerk please take a roll?
Councilmember Bailey.
Here.
Councilmember Kuhnhart.
Here.
Councilmember Ravazio.
Here.
Vice Mayor Beckman.
Here.
Mayor Andrews.
Here. And will you all join me in the pledge of allegiance? And I don't believe you all need to stand for it, but if you just join me in the pledge of allegiance, thank you. There you go.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. The next item is open time for public comment. I believe the town clerk will read any comments that she has received.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Andrews. We did receive one public comment from Roy Wolford, a Corder Madara resident, who asked that it be read during the town manager's report, but we're going to read it early. And I will start the timer.
If you want, Rebecca, just read the whole thing.
Okay. "To the town council and staff, I ask that the content of this email be read during the time of the town manager's report on COVID-19 and that this information be incorporated as an addendum to the town manager's report. As you all know, I look closely at, analyze, and have reported data on weather, geological, related, and other matters over the years. I have provided each of you with COVID-19 data summaries from the Johns Hopkins COVID-19 map over the past month. COVID-19, here are several very sobering stats and a question. That as of April 5th, 2020, in the U.S., there were 331,234 cases and 9,629 deaths from COVID-19. In states characterized as blue, there were 256,389 cases and 7,730 deaths. On a percentage basis of total U.S. data, 77.4% of the cases. And 80.3% of the deaths from COVID-19 occur in blue states. Question, why are states characterized as blue having the vast preponderance of COVID-19 cases and deaths? Influenza, after the COVID-19 is under control, the world still needs to deal with influenza." Influenza. Why am I getting? Why am I getting? I'm getting feedback.
Are we really muted?
Each of you would need to mute your individual mics.
It will work.
Thank you. Let's look at the CDC influenza table one, estimated influenza disease burden by season. Since 2010/11 influenza season for the U.S., on average, there are 3,122 influenza deaths per month with an annual average, annual number range from 12,000 to 61,000. On average, there are 2,387,230 symptomatic illnesses per month with an annual range of 9.3 million to 45 million. On average, there are 37,227 hospitalizations per month with an annual range of 140,000 to 810,000. These are big numbers, too. Question, why is our society, what is our society going to do to lessen the annual influenza impact going forward? Question, to what degree will the recommended hygiene and social distancing continue after COVID-19 and during recurring flu season periods? For good and more thorough hygiene practice, two things in addition to washing hands should be done: clean under the fingernails and wash the face with soap and water. Don't know why these actions aren't mentioned with washing hands. In sum, to date, there continues to be many questions about the reported COVID-19 data and the IHME COVID-19 model forecasted numbers of cases and deaths. Hopefully, in the fullness of time, we will have a clear, accurate, and full picture of the impact of this virulent virus, COVID-19, and the various strains on influenza and how to address and handle these infections going forward. Sincerely, Roy Wolford." I have one more.
Okay.
I have one more from Roy Wolford. He actually combined three different comments, one for item 4A of recognition of outgoing council members and one for general open time for public comment. So I figured I should read this now since it's applicable to this section. "To the town council members current and future and town staff, we hope all of you, your families, town residents, visitors, and workers are healthy and come through these difficult COVID-19 times with minimal financial impact. We thank council members Mr. Andrews and Mr. Bailey for their dedicated service to the town residents of Corder Madara and wish each good health and success in the future. We welcome new council members Mr. Cassisa and Mr. Lee and thank them for stepping forward to take on a very challenging and time-consuming job. We ask the council to make the right decision to protect the residents and workers from possible health and safety issue by rescinding ordinance Chapter 6.18 Regulation of Single-Use Carryout Bags. Protect our grocery workers and shoppers from those bacteria and virus-laden reusable bags. We prefer to use single-use paper bags to carry out our groceries at markets, and we shouldn't have to pay extra for those bags. Sincerely, Roy and Arlene Wolford." Okay, now I will check to see if any members of the public in attendance virtually have raised their hands to ask a question. I see one hand raised from Mr. Bob Bundy. And I will. It doesn't look like he has shared his microphone. So unfortunately, I can't call on him at this time, but if he shares his microphone, we can come back to him at a later date.
And let's also let him know that if that doesn't seem to work out, he can also submit comments via text.
Yes. Dr. Bundy, if you can hear this, you can enter your question in chat if you're unable to share your microphone, but I'll be looking to see if your microphone is shared. Thank you.
Okay, so I guess. But Rebecca?
Yes.
Let's just go forward and go to item three, the declaration of the results of the March 3 immunity election.
And perhaps we can call for additional public comments at that time, too.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. So at this time, we'll move forward to item 3A, Adopt Resolution of Number 14, 2020, Reciting the Facts of the Election Held on March 3rd, 2020 and Declaring Results and Other Such Matters as Provided by Law. Thank you, Mayor and council members. This is a procedural item that is required after the county elections department has certified the results of the election. We cannot move forward with swearing in of the two newly elected council members, Fred Cassisa and Charles Lee, until our council certifies, accepts the results of the election, and adopts the resolution declaring the results of the election. And are there any questions about this item?
I have a very, two very quick comments.
Go ahead.
Mayor. First, I think it's a really wonderful thing that over 68%, almost 69% of eligible voters voted in our town council election. I think that's outstanding. It's a higher percentage than many of the past elections as well to having our local election in alignment with the national, in this case, primary. That's thing one. Thing two is that I noticed that over 70% of the votes were cast by mail. And even though I'm one of the 29% that loves to go in in person, I'm thinking that, given all of other circumstances, that it wouldn't be very difficult for us to move to an all by-mail vote in November if it's necessary. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Welcome. I think the November vote will be driven by the town, by the election department, not
Right.
not by us, but anyway, anyone else with comments? Good. Anyone, would someone like to make a motion, please?
Public comment or no?
No more comments?
Public.
Let me check and see if there's any public comments. I see no additional hands raised.
Okay, I'll make a motion when you adopt resolution number 14/2020, reciting the facts of the election held on March 3rd, 2020, and declaring the results and such other matters as provided by law.
Second. Second.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Kuhnhart.
Yes.
Councilmember Ravazio.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beckman.
Yes.
Mayor Andrews.
Yes.
Okay. I did want to note that there is still one resident with their hand raised, but they do not have a microphone enabled, so I wanted to encourage them to either send their public comment via chat or using the question function if they're able to, and we will get it read into the record.
Or if they can still submit it via email, correct?
Let me, let me check public comments at tcmail.org just to be sure. Share with me just a moment, please. Okay, no additional public comments sent to public comments at tcmail.org either. Okay, that brings us to item 4A, recognition of outgoing council members.
Okay, we're gone.
Item 4A is recognition and presentation of gifts and acknowledgements to outgoing council members, Mayor James Andrews and Councilmember Sloan Bailey, in recognition of their service to the town of Corder Madara upon their retirement from town council.
I move that we skip item 4A and move quickly to item five.
With.
He's called a roll.
It's not a voteable, actionable item, but with the town manager's.
Nice try, though.
Unshare his camera briefly and share mine. Todd, I'm going to unshare you.
Do it.
Of course, now it's not letting me. Okay.
You want me to leave? Just exit out?
If you can just, no, not just unshare your camera.
Okay.
Thank you to the public watching us at home as we. There I am. Okay. So I just wanted to show the public have certificates received. These are from Diane Feinstein's office, and they both say, "In honor and celebration of your service to the town of Corder Madara, you have positively impacted your community through your hard work, dedication, and integrity, and your contributions and goodwill will not be forgotten. As your United States Senator from the state of California, I commend you for your excellent work and wish you continued success in years to come." Senator Diane Feinstein dated this day's April 7th, 2020. So each of you have one of these that we will get to you after the meeting. These are PDFs of certificates of appreciation sent by our Marin County Board of Supervisors, Representative Dennis Redoni for District 4, presented to Sloan C. Bailey for his service on the town of Corder Madara Council from 2013 to 2020. During his tenure, Mr. Bailey represented the town by serving on the governing boards for Marin Clean Energy, Central Marin Fire Authority, Central Marin Police Authority, Ross Valley Paramedic Authority, and Marin County Council of Mayor and Council Members. Additionally, since 2018, Mr. Bailey has served on the Local Agency Formation Commission, LAFCO. Prior to joining the council, Mr. Bailey served on the Planning Commission from 2008 to 2013. And Supervisor Redoni thanks you for your service.
Thank you.
And certificate of appreciation presented to James H. Andrews for his service on the town of Corder Madara Council from 2015 to 2020. During his tenure, Mr. Andrews represented the town by serving on the governing boards for the Central Marin Fire Authority, Central Marin Police Authority, Ross Valley Paramedic Authority, Marin County Council members and council members. Additionally, Mr. Andrews served on the Finance and Audit Ad-Hoc Committee to strengthen the financial health of the town of Corder Madara. I wanted to also say to both of you that other state, local, and regional representatives were also going to be sending you recognition, and they couldn't get their staff, you know, with their offices being, being low staff during this time, that they just weren't able to get it out yet, but we will have some items for you shortly. And while this isn't the way that we wanted to send you off, we will have a more public ceremony should I do that, should you be willing later in the future.
And just one other thing, if I can, can you hear me?
Do you want me to put you on?
No, it's okay. It's okay, I just want to, and I know because I, Councilmember Bailey will shoot me, so I'm not going to go too deep, but I just personally, you, you both allowed me an opportunity to be the town manager, and you took a big chance on me, and I'm forever grateful for that. But both of you have taught me, you know, four key things, and it's fiscal prudence, problem solving, and how to engage the community and being resilient. I can't think of a better time to bring those four qualities and lessons that you've taught me over the last few years forward in this, this time of crisis. So I just really appreciate the heck out of both of you, and I'm going to miss you, and thank you for all that you've done for us as a staff and a town. And I had a walk-off song I was going to give you, but I can't pull it off right now, but you will be getting that walk-off song shortly.
And I also wanted to add that we usually give the departing mayor a ceremonial gavel plaque with a gavel and a plaque with our appreciation. And unfortunately, the trophy store closed down before we could pick it up, but it is ready, and as soon as I'm able to pick it up, I will, I will present that to you. And to outgoing Councilmember Sloan Bailey, who does not appreciate pomp and circumstance, I just wanted to say that we have these lovely Corder Madara logo pin cuff links.
If I may as well, Rebecca, I just wanted to thank both of you for your leadership and dedication. You are really a tribute to your town, and I have really enjoyed working with both of you and working with the town and under your leadership, and I just wanted to say thank you for all you do. You really set the standard high, and it's very clear how much time and effort you put into this effort.
Could I be permitted to pile on?
Yes, please. I need to check all the other.
Is that order in there? Okay.
It looks like I have some questions from the public, so I'll look at answering those while you continue to speak.
James, I have increasing respect for your capabilities, and I really do hope that you stay in touch on the issue of fiscal matters in our town, at least, because you have exceptional ability and great, set a great example and a high standard on watching over the town's finances. Sloan, I've watched you since you were on the planning commission and through CCMC, through the MCE board process and meetings, and I have to say that you have taught me many, many important lessons for proper conduct of oneself in a public setting and also bringing to the greatest extent possible the, the central purposes of our long mission into focus as we look at different kinds of issues and, and observing the sort of no BS approach, if I may use that phrase in this context. I really have greatly admired and hope that we can all stay in touch.
Thank you, David.
Does anyone else have anything else?
Just quickly, thank you both. You both have done an amazing job. I appreciate all the time and energy and thought you have brought to things. And I'm going to, I'm looking forward to the two new people, but we're going to miss you guys. So thanks for everything you've done. Really appreciate it.
Thank you, Bob.
And I, too, would just like to thank you both for the expertise and the experience that you've brought to the council. It's been a pleasure serving with you, and you've both been something of role models to me since before my time even running for council. So thank you again for your service to our town.
Thank you, Eli.
Okay, before I check the, the public attendees to see if anyone has their hand raised, some members of the public watching online have asked questions through the question function. First, Suzie Beatty says, "I'm clapping yay." Patty Stollier says, "Much appreciation for two good men." And our planning director, planning and building director, Adam Wolfe, says, "What everyone else said, it's been wonderful to work with both of you over the last many years. Thanks for all that you have done."
Your mic went out.
Rebecca, you're not, your mic is not working. Rebecca, she can't hear.
All right.
Trials of the coronavirus era.
Yes.
Begin again, we.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh goodness, I, what, at what point did you lose me?
Patty Stollier.
We're good.
Oh. Okay. Sorry about that, everybody. I wonder what happened. All right, so if you lost me, Patty Stollier, "Much appreciation for two good men." Adam Wolfe said, or Adam Wolfe is our director of planning and building, and he said, "What everyone else said, it's been wonderful to work with both of you over the last many years. Thanks for all that you have done. So much more to be said, but congrats." And the rest of the comments are residents letting me know that my mic is out. So thank you. Please feel free to submit comments via the questions feature, and I'll continue to read them into the record. Okay.
Sloan, you have, you have to send us a once-a-month picture of the progress of your beard.
With that being said, I think the next step is for me to unshare Sloan and Jim's cameras and add in the cameras of Councilmember-elect Fred Cassisa and Charles Lee. Does that sound correct?
Or you, or you get rid of us. Jim, can I say one quick thing? Let me just pass my gratitude to staff, my compliments to the rest of the council, and my thanks to the town for the opportunity you've been of service. Good luck. God bless Corder Madara.
Jim, do you have any additional words?
Yes, I'd like to thank my fellow council members. I've enjoyed serving on the council with you. And to Eli, I'm going to hand off my gavel.
Wait, we got to, we got to vote on that.
Well, you are running the rest of the meeting as vice mayor until we reorganize.
Oh, very well then.
So. But we voted.
Yeah, he meant the reorganization of the council and the selection of the mayor and the vice mayor.
Right.
But before we get to that, I have to see the new council members.
Right, and we.
Feel free to air at any time, Rebecca.
All right. Is this it? Are we unsharing?
Yep. See you, guys.
Okay, so now I will let Fred and Charles jump in. Welcome. And before I reshare town manager's monologue, I need to proceed to the next item on the agenda, which is the oath of office. The town clerk will administer the oath of office to newly elected council members, Fred Cassisa and Charles Lee. So this is new to me doing this virtually, but I did provide each of you with copies of your oath of, or affirmation of allegiance. So this is what I will read to you, and I'll read this one by one so that you can each do this individually. And the first, welcome, the first oath is going to be read to Fred Cassisa. And do you have a copy in front of you, or?
Yeah, I do.
Uh. I state your name.
I, Fred Cassisa.
I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
The Constitution of the state of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all, these foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations, Councilmember Cassisa. Now, if you could please sign your, your oath on, on camera so that we can witness the signing.
Always prepared.
And then sign both the original and the copy, and keep the original for yourself, and send the copy back to me with, for my records. And did you wish to acknowledge your spouse?
Yes, this is my wife, Maureen.
Yes, you make this the bride.
Okay. Thank you. And now to Councilmember-elect Charles Lee.
Hello.
Welcome, Lee family. Did you want to start by introducing your family?
Yeah, so it's my wife, Leanne, and my three sons, the twins Cyrus and Asher, and White. Say hi, everyone. So they're, they're going to help with, you know, be here for the oath, and then they're going to help do the pen, so.
Okay. Here we go. I state your name.
I, Charles L. Lee.
I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And to the Constitution of the state of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations, Councilmember Lee.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Okay, well.
Welcome aboard.
Thanks.
Thanks.
All right, here we go.
Okay, while he's signing that, I actually realized that while I read Supervisor Redoni's certificates, I actually inadvertently didn't read his emailed public comment to Sloan and Jim, so I'll read that into the record now. Sloan and Jim, thank you for your service to Corder Madara and Marin. You both have been great partners for me personally. And District 4, I am truly honored to have worked with you both. Welcome, Charles and Fred, respectfully, Dennis Redoni. And then I will check to see if there are any hands raised. No hands raised, but there are some questions. I received a late public comment from David Bell, who says, "Thanks and gratitude to Sloan and Jim." That looks like it. So Vice Mayor Beckman, you can proceed with the meeting. I am going to unshare my camera and add the town manager back in.
Great. Okay, we're going to proceed with the reorganization of the town council. 6A is selection of the mayor. Would somebody like to make a nomination for mayor?
Yes, I'll nominate Eli Beckman.
Thank you. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Is anybody muted?
I'll second. Alright.
Hey, I was muted when I said second.
Alright, we've got a nomination and a second. Rebecca, could we have a vote, please?
Just a moment, Mr. Vice Mayor, we would, should need to take public comment on this item.
Oh, oh, very well, let's take public comment. Rebecca, are there any hands up?
I would ask that the public raise their hands now if they have any public comment to make, and we'll give a few moments.
Okay, we'll stand by.
If anybody raises their hands while I reorder how I call the vote. Let me check one more time.
Rebecca, you have to do a lot of simultaneous action.
It'll, it'll be easier as we go forward, it's a learning process. I do see one hand raised by Catherine Lee. It's likely that she had a comment on the swearing in, but I will unmute now, and she can make comments. Catherine Lee, you have been unmuted.
I just wanted to say congratulations to my nephew.
Thank you for participating. And let's see if there are any other questions. Okay, seeing none, we will continue, but I will continue to read public comments into the record whenever it does come into play.
Great, thank you. Alright, should we go ahead and take a vote on the mayor?
Okay, let's see if I can do this correctly. Councilmember Cacisa.
Yes.
Councilmember Kuhnhart.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Ravazio.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beckman.
Why not?
Congratulations, Mayor Beckman.
Thank you. I would now accept a nomination for Vice Mayor. Hearing none, I will nominate David Kuhnhart.
Appreciate that.
Is there a second?
Don't get shy, Councilmember.
Not the time to be shy.
Is anyone think they're muted? Okay.
Would anybody like to discuss an alternate nomination?
Any a second?
I would invite our councilmembers to make a second.
Am I doing something wrong?
Would any councilmembers like to speak up about their hesitation to make a second on this nomination? Going to have to name names if somebody doesn't speak up.
Did I freeze the meeting?
Actually, neither Charles nor Fred has moved in the last... Oh, there you are, you are alive, okay.
Okay, breathe again.
Town Attorney, is there anything preventing David from seconding his own nomination?
David, I believe can second his own nomination. You also will need to take public comment on this item, and so I think either of those actions may result in, in moving this forward.
Rebecca, do any members of the public have their hands up at this time?
I see no hands raised, and I will check the questions. I see no questions either.
Would you also check the public comment email address just to be extra sure?
I see no emails to publiccomment@tcml.org, and in the questions bar, I see, "Approve Kuhnhart for Vice," from David Bell.
Thank you. Bringing it back to council, would any of the councilmembers second the nomination of David Kuhnhart as Vice Mayor?
Charles and Fred, you are allowed to speak up.
David, it appears it might fall to you.
I would be honored to help you, Mr. Mayor, in that role.
Alright, we have a nomination and a second. Rebecca, has anybody additional put their hands up to comment or submitted a comment by other means?
No questions. No hands raised, no comments to publiccomment@tcml.org.
So, I will- I think it is time.
I will call-
Yeah, go ahead.
Councilmember Cacisa.
I say no.
Councilmember Kuhnhart.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
I'm gonna say yes.
Councilmember Ravazio.
No.
Mayor Beckman.
Yes.
Thank you.
So, that has it. David Kuhnhart has been elected Vice Mayor. There are no presentations. We're going to move on to the consent calendar. The consent calendars for items that are routine or have been discussed previously and do not require further discussion. Are there any members of the council or staff who would like to pull any items from the consent calendar? I'm going to pull item 8D. Apart from that, are there any members of the public who are expressing an interest to pull any items from the consent calendar or comment on the consent calendar?
Eli, I, I do have a question on two. Eight H and H, eight, eight H and eight, eight I, which are the meetings from March 17th. I think Charles and I would have to abstain on those because we weren't part of the town council.
Good call.
Have to be pulled and voted on separately.
I think those do, is that correct, Teresa, Town Attorney?
You don't need to pull them, you just both state your recusal, and then when you vote, your vote will be as to the remaining items.
Okay, thank you. Rebecca, any members of the public expressing any wish to comment with pull items?
It's, it's possible that I, I missed Roy Wolford, who had his hand raised, but he is just appearing on my name bar. So, I am going to acknowledge Roy at this time, and he, where is he? And unmute him. Roy, you're unmuted, I'm sorry that I didn't see you earlier.
Yeah, no, that's okay. I, this, I, I think everything's been decided at this point. Are you hearing me?
Yes.
Okay, good. I, I was just gonna suggest, why don't we just postpone electing the Vice Mayor at this time until everybody can get together and talk about it? But, you know, that's, uh, it looks like it's already done, so, fine with me.
Right, and in addition, that would have to happen in a public meeting. Okay, any other public comment, Rebecca?
Nothing, nothing else that I see.
Okay, then I would entertain a motion to move the consent calendar with the exception of item 8D.
So, move second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Great. Rebecca, the vote, please.
Oh, I didn't catch the second.
David.
Thank you. Councilmember Cacisa.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Ravazio.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kuhnhart.
Yes.
Mayor Beckman.
Yes. And Charles and Fred, did you guys want to add into that, that you are abstaining from eight H and eight I?
Yes, please, thank you.
Okay, can the record show that, please?
Yes.
Great, okay. I have pulled item 8D, which concerns adopting Resolution Number 162020 to appoint one board member and one operations committee member to represent Corder Madera on the new Marin wildfire prevention joint powers authority. According to the resolution, the draft that we have in our agenda packets, this resolution is written to appoint the mayor, which is now myself and the town manager. I would propose that we amend this resolution to appoint, instead of me, to appoint Councilmember Ravazio, given that he is now the longest-serving member of the fire council on our council, and I think that his experience and expertise in this subject matter is going to align well with the work of the wildfire, the wildfire JPA. So, I suppose-
Could I add, could I add to your suggestion, which I, I agree with personally, that perhaps it would be a good thing to, for the town to have an alternate in addition?
Uh, yeah, I think that if that were, you know, if that, we can do that when we, when we appoint, you know, committee assignments, but I think, given that it's not in the resolution, that's probably not something that's spelled out by the JPA structure. So, we can come back to that. But first up, Bob, I want to check, are you okay with this?
I'm totally fine with it. I've been working with these guys for a year on the passage of the bond measure, so I know, um, we've been working together. I'd be honored to do it.
Fantastic, thanks for stepping up. Rebecca, is there any public comment on this item?
I will, we'll check, but I also wanted to add, Mayor Beckman, that I did check with Chief Shert, and the reason why we did not include an alternate this time was because the authority has not asked for alternatives.
Okay, that's what I thought.
And they may come back at some point and ask for alternates, but they haven't this time.
Thanks for checking.
Okay, so, no-
Is there public comments?
I'm looking for public comments right now, and seeing none, I, we can proceed.
Are there any other council comments on this item? Okay, great, then I would like to make a motion.
I would like to move the passage of Resolution 16-2020, the town council appointing Councilmember Ravazio as our representative, plus one operations committee member. I assume that's our town, town manager to the wildfire prevention JPA.
I'll, I'll second that motion.
Great, Rebecca, can we have a vote, please?
Councilmember Cacisa.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Ravazio.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kuhnhart.
Yes.
Mayor Beckman.
Yes, and thank you, Bob, for stepping up. That takes care of the consent calendar, so we're gonna move on to public hearings. Our only public hearing is item 9A. That is a public hearing to possibly adopt Resolution Number 172020, authorizing the Marin General Services Authority to collect franchise and PEG access fees from cable television providers, and two, to introduce ordinance number 994, to terminate the Marin telecommunications agency, or MTA. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Again, those are two recommended actions being asked of the council. Some quick background, it's on page one of your staff report. The MTA was formed in 1997 as a joint powers authority, or JPA, with the adoption of a telecommunications ordinance by each of its member agencies. Originally, the members had hoped that MTA would be able to negotiate local franchises for all types of telecommunications facilities. Thus, the name of the organization was changed to the Marin County Cable Rate Regulation Joint Powers Authority to MTA. But subsequent to that formation of MTA, there were a number of changes in state and federal law that eliminated the local franchise authority over telecommunications entirely, and really leaving MTA in a much more limited role. And it was primarily, has been used over the previous decade for administrative transitioning of MTA functions. And so, the discussion recently with the MTA Board, with the resignation of the planned departure of the executive officer effective June 30th of this year, the MTA Board asked staff to consider options for transitioning the MTA from its current structure into other alternative arrangements. The Board referred the detailed consideration of options to its Finance and Policy Committee. Members comprised of Chair Barbara Kohler, Vice Chair Sashi Mackenty, and Andrew McCullough, Dennis Redoni, and David Kulik. The FP Committee met on December 12th of 2019 to discuss possible transition options, including the following four. Again, these are on page two, at the bottom of your staff report. And they looked at four things. One, should they retain existing MTA structure and recruit a new executive officer? Two, should they retain the current structure and contract with other member agencies, such as the County of Marin or the City of San Rafael? Should they dissolve MTA and transfer its functions, which are now primarily administrative, to the MGSA? Or should they dissolve the MTA entirely, allowing individual member agencies to collect franchise fees? And so, of the four options listed, the Finance and Policy Committee members determined that transferring the MTA statutory, administrative, and financial, and contract management functions into the MGSA was its preferred option. As you know, earlier in 2019, there was a grand jury report that talked about this issue, and they made a number of suggestions, and one of them was this. What we're asking you tonight is basically to move the functions into MGSA and basically deconsolidate and cease the MTA functions moving forward. The collective financial benefit to member jurisdictions and dissolving the MTA and transferring these functions to the MGSA is significant. While expenses for the first fiscal year will most likely remain the same, future years would generate annual savings of approximately $100,000. Additional, additionally, multiple shared service levels are already in place between the MGSA and MTA. The two JPAs coordinate and have the same office space, accounting and financial staff, office furnishings, equipment, recording management systems, and other, and other options. The MTA executive officer and the MGA, MGSA executive officer also provide general administrative backup to each other when necessary. So, again, if, if the recommendation described above is approved by a majority of the member agencies, the last meeting of the MTA Board would likely occur on Wednesday, June 10th, 2020, to close out the MTA and complete the transfer of functions to the MGSA. And then there are a number, again, at the bottom of page three and the top of page four of your staff report, there are a number of bullet points of functions that would have to happen for the closing and trans, the closing of the MTA and transferring functions to the MGSA. There's currently no fiscal impact this current budget year for this, this decision for consideration. But again, moving forward, there would be some savings for Corder Madera on our JPA cost for the MGSA moving forward. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Todd. Are there any clarifying questions from the council? David?
As the, for the, just the last year, the representative of Corder Madera to the MTA, I just wanted to say that everything that's been described so far is on, on point, and add a couple of points. Wanted that the Board, that is representatives of, of the elected representatives of each of the member jurisdictions that is in the MTA are unanimously backing this move as, and, and are in agreement that it would be good to save the money and save the level of confusion, and really delegate to the staff level. MGSA is a joint powers authority. We are still represented by the good graces of our town manager and finance staff.
David, so we can stick to the regular orders, there a question in here? We'll come back for comments after we, for council comments after we take public comment.
Well, I'm, I'm just, I'm just augmenting from the point of view of the policy member that has been a part of this, what has been reported so far.
Okay, are there any clarifying questions from councilmembers?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that if this is adopted, that we will not be nominating a new representative in the future when, when we go to the next item.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you, Charles. Are there any other questions from councilmembers? Seeing none, Rebecca, is there any public comment?
Okay, I'm checking for raised hands, and I see a request for public comment from Roy Wolford, so I will acknowledge the comments and unmute. Roy, you're unmuted.
Yeah, hi, I, no, I didn't, something's going on with raising hand or not raising hand on the screen here, so I had put it down. I noticed it was up, so, anyway, no comment, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Keep your little mouth.
Okay, then, no, no further public comments seen.
I think the Wolfords may still be on a live mic.
I just muted.
Okay, great. Thanks. Okay, so bringing you back to the council, now's the time for council comments. David, I'm sorry that I cut you off. Is there anything else that you would like to add to your previous comments?
A slight of color, why there's two actions. The first resolution is to delegate the authority to MGSA, which has been judged to be the best recipient of it. And then the second is addressing the fact that we have in our own ordinances, the creation of the original MTA and a, we have to replace and eliminate essentially that piece of our own ordinances. So that's why there's two separate actions here.
Any other comments from council members? In that case, I would entertain a motion to adopt resolution number seventeen twenty twenty.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Rebecca, can we have a vote, please?
Councilmember Casusa.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Ravazio.
Yes.
Vice Markunhardt.
Yes.
Mayor Beckman.
Yes. And guys, just for kind of best practices, when we're doing these video meetings, when we make a motion or a second, let's please say our names, just so that it's extra clear to members of the public who's moving and seconding the items. Can I get a motion to introduce and do the first reading or wave the first reading, I assume, of ordinance number nine nine four?
It's Bob Ravazio, I also move.
David Kuhnhart, second.
Rebecca, can we have a vote, please?
Councilmember Casusa.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Ravazio.
Yes.
Vice Markunhardt.
Yes.
Mayor Beckman.
Yes. All right.
And may I just, Mr. Mayor, may I just add one item? There is a, a meeting of the board of MTA tomorrow evening at seven PM. That will be a virtual meeting just to continue in this process and continue rolling down the path towards approval. And also to see the latest financials, if anybody is interested, so.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to our business items. The only business item is item ten A, which is discussion and possible action concerning council committee appointments for twenty twenty to twenty twenty one. Is there a staff report with this item?
Oh, thank you, Mayor Beckman. All right, I was muted. Activity undertaken by the council each time it reorganizes, we select new council appointments for the upcoming year. No further report other than, than that, other than with the COVID nineteen situation being what it is right now. Many of these committees are not meeting at this time.
Great, thank you. Okay, we'll do council questions, we'll do public comment, and then we'll bring it back to the council for discussion. So are there any clarifying questions about this from council members before we get into discussing it? Seeing none, Rebecca, is there any public comment on this item?
No public. No public comment. But I did want to add, if we do defer, if you do elect to defer some of these appointments, I would like to recommend that you do make the appointments to subcommittees for board and commission interviews. We will be scheduling virtual interviews at some point in probably May. And it would be good to have those committees set, just so if something should come up, I, I have the committees to call on.
Okay, absolutely. We can definitely get that taken care of tonight. For the rest of the appointments, what I would suggest to you guys, and let me know how you feel about this, but I would suggest that what we do is freeze my appointments, David's appointments, and Bob's appointments, since we're the three continuing council members. All of Sloan's appointments and all of Jim's appointments, I would say we can generally hold vacant for the next two weeks, and this will give us all a chance to look through the, the sort of menu of committee assignments. There's going to be a council strategic retreat on April twentieth. I think at that time, since that'll be a publicly noticed meeting under the Brown Act, you guys can submit to me your, your preferences on, on, you know, which appointments you would like. And that'll give me the night of April twentieth to look them over and try and sort them out in a way that works best. And then on the following day, which is going to be the April twenty first council meeting, I can propose an arrangement based on the preferences that you guys have submitted to me, and we should be able to move forward from there. How does that sound to you guys?
Sounds like a really smart approach.
Yeah, okay, great. Glad to hear that.
We just have submitted you, Eli, before the twentieth or so?
At, at, at the council strategic retreat on April twentieth, because it has to be submitted in a publicly noticed meeting under the Brown Act. Yeah, okay, great. So then we will still take care of these, of these interview, committee interview posts, as Rebecca has requested.
Mr. Mayor, one, one last, one last thing on those appointments committees. Obviously, we are adding the welfare JPA, and we are subtracting the Marin telecommunications agency. And I would also say that the appointment, second page of listings should have our town manager is assigned to the MGSA going forward.
Good point. That makes sense. All right. Staff, do we even know to that?
Yes.
No, thank you.
Okay, great. So now moving on to the subcommittees for board and commission interviews, which are on page five of the staff report for item ten A. Planning Commission is Kuhnhart and Ravazio, who are both continuing, so those will stay the same. Parks and Rec, Beckman and Ravazio continuing, so those will stay the same. Flood Control Board is myself, and then that was Jim, but he is gone. So would anybody like to put their hand up to be on the committee that interviews potential flood control board members?
Yeah, I don't have a problem doing that.
Awesome. Okay, Fred, you will do that with me. BPAC is Ravazio and Kuhnhart. Marin County Committee on Aging is Bailey and Kuhnhart. So we will need somebody to put their hand up to replace Sloan on that.
And that committee is our, the representative to that committee is reappointed every four years. So I think we have one more year left on Carol Veller's term, so it wouldn't be needed in the coming year.
Okay, maybe we'll just leave that vacant, vacant for now then. Okay, and then the last one is the Sales Tax Citizens Oversight Committee. Rebecca, do you anticipate any upcoming interviews for that?
I need to publicly notice a vacancy. We did have a resignation. John Howard has resigned from that committee.
Okay, so we should fill these spots tonight, then.
That would be helpful.
This is, Fred, can see, I have a problem being on that.
Awesome. Okay, is there anybody else who would like to be on that? If there's not, I'll just do it. Okay, I'll do it with Fred.
Mr., Mr. Mayor, I suggest you take public comment before you finalize the tentative decisions you've just made.
Sounds good. Thank you. Let's see, is there anything else? Okay, so the last thing I would ask before we take public comment is that in addition to the sort of scheme that we've just laid out, which is holding most of these positions blank, since they're not meeting anyways, until we have a chance to sort this out, I would ask that we add into our motion, just giving the mayor the ability to make an interim appointment, should something come up and a, and a meeting need to happen. Okay, Rebecca, is there any public comment?
I am checking.
Okay. In the meantime, are there any other council comments?
I have a chat question, and I had just asked, and it was confirmed that it was meant for public comment. Patty Stollier asks, wouldn't it be prudent to have Fred interview Parks and Rec Commission nominee?
Do we anticipate a Parks and Rec Commission interview? Oh, we do, because Fred just came from the Parks and Rec Commission.
And the same can be said for the.
My spot on the, would you like to take my spot on the Parks and Rec Commission?
Yeah, I'll, I'll take it. It may be better for consistency purposes.
Agreed. Okay, cool. I guess I'll just ask David and Bob, do either of you feel like giving up your seat on the planning commission interviews for our departing planning commissioner?
Happy to continue.
I can go either way, whatever you want to do.
Charles, would you, would you like to help choose your successor or?
Yeah, I would like that.
Okay, so Bob, would you be okay then switching with Charles?
Sure.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, great. That settles all that. Rebecca, was there any public comment?
Aside from the one I read, I see no further public comments.
Okay, great. So then I would entertain a motion for us to leave Sloan and Jim's committee assignments vacant for the next two weeks, for us to continue all remaining committee assignments as they stand, and for us to modify the subcommittees for board and commission interviews as we just did, and to give the mayor the power to make interim appointments, should some sort of meeting arise within the next two weeks on one of our vacant positions.
Can I ask you just a follow up question? There are some continuing Zoom meetings of the Marin Clean Energy Board. I've been an alternate backing up Sloan and participating in some of those. Presumably, the alternates are live, that is to say, there's, there's no change in that. So if we have alternates, if some of us are alternates to a departing member, that we can continue to step in and, and help out.
You're saying if that body has a meeting within the next two weeks?
Right.
Sure, yeah. I understand from Sloan that MCE does not have anything scheduled within the next two weeks, but sure, yeah, in principle, that works. So would anybody like to make a motion here, this big ungainly motion that I just spelled out? A, a simple so moved would work. Is that right, Teresa?
So moved.
David Kuhnhart, so moved.
All right, is there a second? Great, thanks. Fantastic. Rebecca, can we have a vote, please?
Councilmember Casusa.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Ravazio.
Yes.
Vice Markunhardt.
Yes.
Mayor Beckman.
Yes. All right, that concludes our business items and brings us to item eleven, which is town manager and council reports. Mr. Town Manager, what do you have for us?
Well, interesting times. I just want to start off, I wanted to give an update on the COVID nineteen, on the COVID crisis and how we're responding, how it's impacting our community. And I just want to start off, and I think it's twenty five years now in local government. I've truly never seen anything quite like this. Both the impact socially, medically, and economic to our town is going to be immense. And just one thing that I do know is I know that we're resilient, and we're going to get through this. And so I wanted to start it off with thanking my staff, because in times like this, the power shut offs, the fires, it just seems like everything is, is just, it's just not an incident. It's, it's like an impactful one that to the, to the level that we really haven't seen. And, and it's, it appears like this is the sign of our times. And our staff has just become so resilient, and I just want to, I want to thank them for all the work that they do. It really inspires me to be part of it and to work with them. And so, you know, it really starts with Rebecca. Enough said about her. You know, she, she runs this town and she helps us, you know, stay on point with what we're doing, with major support from Lorena, who's here tonight as well. The two of them are really responsible for all communications that go out to our community. And through this crisis and others, they've just done a really good job of telling the story and getting info out there. Mike Moriarty, our code enforcement officer, you know, by title doesn't do what he does justice. He's just not code enforcement. He, he solves problems and he helps people. And think about, you know, all the stuff that has been going on right now, the work of Mike from Code Enforcement, Adam Wolf, our planning and building director, and Chief Norton, the three of them have really had to put their heads together with our legal counsel, Teresa Stricker, to really understand, you know, this isn't our order, this is coming from the county. And to understand all the nuances that we've been placed with to, to enforce and to really try to understand what is going on. And keep in mind, and it's really, it's the first I've ever seen this at both the local, county, regional, and state level, decisions are happening daily and sometimes multiple times a day. I've tried to write an update for the council over the last ten days, and I can't, because it changes every five hours. And so, you know, the work of Mike and Code Enforcement, CNPA, from, you know, the work of Chief Norton, our town attorney and Adam, I just, they, they've been remarkable of how they've been able to problem solve vet, vet issues and really help our community. And amongst our county, which we all have, you know, conference calls three times a week at all levels with our cohorts, the information that they've put out in their respective departments has become the leaders in our county. And, and people have used our, the information that we're putting out and the problem solving that our great directors are doing. So I really appreciate that. You know, Ashley Howe is our new Parks and Recreation Director, and her first day was the second day of the shelter in place order. It was her, so her first day here was basically this, this is what she walked into. And she's really hit the ground running, and I'm going to talk about some of the work that she's been doing, but I'm, I'm very thankful we have her on board. RJ Suko, our Public Works Director, and Jamie King, our, our Public Works Maintenance, he's our Assistant Superintendent of Public Works Maintenance. I've just been doing a great job out there of making sure the work of the town continues. Chief Shirts on the fire team have just been just a constant support and beacon of consistency for what we need in our town. Michael Deng is our IT consultant, and he has helped us get into the twenty first century of IT and infrastructure. And so if anything good comes out of this, it'll be that. And Janet Thesean, who is our public, I'm sorry, she's our human resources director. She's just been really outstanding and just how do we take care of our personnel in a thoughtful way during a time like this? And again, Teresa Stricker, who's been there every step of the way, is the town attorney, a confidant, and really kind of helping, you know, direct things from, from the standpoint of the state level of how do we interpret all these changes going on? I've asked each department to give a quick summary of what is going on and how it impacted. And if you allow me, I would just like to go through and give an update to the council, because really, the last thorough update you had was about ten days ago, and also for the community, so they understand that government is continuing. It's different, but the work of the town is getting done, and we are here. What I'll tell you is that approximately sixty to seventy percent of our town staff are working from home and telecommuting. We're also staggering, those of us that are here, we're staggering our shifts, just in case, you know, something were to happen at home or here, and we were to contract the virus, that the entire town staff does not go down. And so there's a lot of things that come with that. But again, I think the good part is, we can, we can do the work of the town from home and at work, and it's getting done. I've asked, I wanted to start with Code Enforcement, Building and Planning. Again, it's really the work of Mike Moriarty, Adam Wolf, and Brian Fenty. And I wanted to, I don't like normally to read things, but I kind of want to summarize a few things that they're working on and what they're seeing out there. So since this started, the building department has been challenged with developing new processes and procedures by which the town would receive and process and issue building permit applications. This has been a really difficult undertaking, as you can imagine, but one of the good things that came from this is we've used to, pre this, this situation, we had mandatory in-person permit application submission processes, and we're now completely online with that process. And so we're testing that process now, working through the, the kinks, so to speak. But that's going to be a huge benefit to our community moving forward. But as you can imagine, of this new process, we've been inundated with phone calls and emails regarding pending projects and recent submittals. Prior to the updated health order that was issued in, that was issued prior to March thirty first of this year, we were processing all incoming permits. So as they were received for the last several weeks, we were allowing residential construction work to continue under the previous health order. We were allowing all health and safety projects to continue, but we're also allowing ADUs and residential construction projects to move forward that would contribute to the Marin County housing shortage. We were also allowing those to continue so long as crews were taking social distancing safety precautions and using the proper safety gear and gloves and masks. But on March thirty first, twenty twenty, Marin County issued an updated health order that was significantly more restrictive than the previous orders and only allowed construction to continue if their project was deemed to be a health and safety concern. As you know, the reasoning behind the order is to simply keep people home and prevent them for potentially spreading the virus. This is essential, this is essentially shut down ninety to ninety-five percent of residential construction projects within our town. Following the updated order last week, we conducted site visits at our significant construction sites in town and relayed the updated health order. The updated health order has presented additional challenges to staff. We're fielding numerous emails, phone calls, and requests by homeowners to continue their projects despite the updated order. But we're also providing them explanations to why they feel significant projects should continue or not. significant projects should continue or not. And so really, that decision is fault solely on the building official, Brian Fenty, and our Director of Building and Planning, Adam Wolf. And so, they make decisions like this on a daily basis. And one of the problems is, this order came down from the county, but it's not completely black and white, there's gray. It's the county order, but we as a town are tasked with enforcing it. And so when we have a problem, when we need, we're in one of those gray areas and we need someone to provide us guidance, really, we're kind of left to our own to do that. And it's been a really challenging issue. And it's been frustrating from the town staff standpoint. When this order came down, staff did not know it was going to happen until it came down. And so there wasn't input and feedback at the staff level from the Planning and Building Directors and the town and city managers. And so again, we talk three times a week, and it's been a big discussion from our standpoint of understanding why things are coming down, how they're going to come down, and have some feedback within that. And so those frustrations shared of our residents are also shared with your staff. And so what we're doing is we're having, trying to have a voice for you. We're trying to mediate those issues at the county level the best we can. And we're going to continue to do that on a day-to-day basis. In the days and weeks following the health order, both town and Central Mountain Police Authority have been inundated with reports of non-essential businesses open during the shelter in place, active construction sites and residents not adhering to social distancing requirements. In general, the greater portion of our Corder Madara population are adhering to the health guidelines. Those are, those who are sheltering in place are very frustrated with others not taking this order serious or not doing their part to reduce the further spread of the virus. Those adhering to this order are calling in to report violations at the Code Enforcement level with Mike, through your department head, your town manager, your town clerk, an assistant manager, and Central Mountain Police Authority. As an example, on Monday morning when I came in, we had 60 pending complaints. It's a problem solved just at 8 o'clock in the morning. It's significant and a major drain on our staff. Responding to issues that surfaced as a result of the COVID pandemic has been very fluid process and it continues to change daily, as discussed earlier. As the days have passed, we've seen more and more residents comply with the general health order. Early on, we had congregations at parks, skate parks, schools, and walking paths. Town staff has had to limit access to these areas with barricades, signage, and others to address this. And recently, Central Mountain Police Authority has created a compliance officer to proactively go out in the community and address shelter in place violations. They are now handling all social distancing, public gatherings at parks, schools, and other relevant violations of the shelter in place order to include complaints of construction and landscaping. CNPA's main goal here is to educate our community and perform the lowest level of enforcement action possible. And we're also continuing to send out regular updates and messages to our community via our newsflash next door and to provide community members with up-to-date information as they happen. And it's on our website and our newsletters and all social media avenues. And so from the public works standpoint, we have two departments. We have the Engineering and Maintenance. On our engineering team led by RJ Suko, we continue with five to six projects. They're smaller, but they're emergency repair or safety improvement types of projects. A majority are sanitary district items that we're continuing to work on and make sure they get complete as it is a health and safety issue. We're staggering our shifts, so at any time, you have 50% of the engineering staff here and 50% working from home. On our maintenance team, they're considered an essential service in public safety. So they are working here daily. Again, we're staggering our shifts and we're making sure that we follow the safe distancing practices and protocols. But they will continue to maintain our parks and properties from a health and safety standpoint, you know. And it's important at our parks, any increased foliage will attract rodents and rats. It's something that is probably the weak, we're trying to stay consistent, I'll say, with the order of how we treat our residents. And it's something that we should talk about as well. Within the order on landscaping, we'll get a lot of calls of landscapers or gardeners doing work. And so really, that health and safety guideline that I just shared of how we use our maintenance team is something that falls on a resident. If they feel it's a health and safety matter to cut back foliage because they don't want rodents to come in to their yard or their house, they're justified to do that. And so it's a very gray area within the order. It's one that we're getting a lot of complaints on and we're struggling with. And so it's one area that we continue to work with the county on for best practices and feedback on that. We're also continuing with vegetation management led by Marla Orth and our Fire Marshal, Ruben Martin. So that work continues in those high-risk areas throughout our potential evacuation corridors and pathways. As you know, our red flag days and season will be coming soon enough. And even though this is going on, it's important to position our town from a health and safety standpoint with this work. And so that is continuing, although I will recognize it has been limited by this order. Parks and Recreation, again, Ashley Howe hit the ground running. She has instituted a few things that have been outstanding on our website and in all of our social media. She instituted a virtual recreation and resource point. This page offers updates and new ideas to keep our residents healthy, entertained, and informed during this time period. She's also put together a door hanger, which is going to go out in the form of a mailer shortly, and it provides local updates. And so we've partnered with our cohorts over at the City of Larkspur. And so we're doing this in conjunction with both communities, both Park and Rec Departments and their library staff in Larkspur. And it will provide local updates for the town of Corder Madara, Larkspur, updated FEMA information on the COVID virus and misconceptions. It'll have a fact sheet. It'll also provide information on the park closure order. And it also talks about if you need assistance. And so, if you need assistance, you can call a line and you can give your, provide your information and you'll get, you'll get resources back to you, whether that's transportation, food delivery, or anything else. We also are soliciting volunteers. And so if you want to volunteer, you can also call a main line or via our website and sign up to be a volunteer. Our staff has also, over the last 10 days, started calling our senior, our seniors. And it's basically a list of 346 seniors from our Park and Rec list as well as our age-friendly data list. And so, our staff started calling them just to check in. You know, this, these are the, are citizens that could be high-risk, could also be in social isolation. A lot of the work of Patty Stolier and Carla Condon through the Intergenerational Center over the last two years has done a great job building a program to bring the seniors out of their house in social isolation and to really help them and provide a great, you know, family type of atmosphere. And now they're isolated. And so, with the help of the team, we started calling them. So far, on a weekly basis, we've contacted approximately 167 Corder Madara residents, 50 in Larkspur and 23 in Greenbry. Three so far of that number has requested assistance with groceries or prescription. Also on these calls, we've, we so far have two people have volunteered to help. And let's see, what else do I have on my statistics here? And then also, out of our 346 seniors, we've left messages for 94 of them and haven't heard back. And so then again, the next step of the door hanger and mailers is an important step to try to get information to the community that might not have access to computers. And so to try the mail service as well to get this information out. The Chamber of Commerce and Business Community, and so there's a lot going on here. We're working closely with our rep. Mayor Beckman is our rep from the Council for the Chamber of Commerce. We have been in close contact with our business community and the Chamber of Commerce to support them. One of the initiatives going on right now, it's on our reader board and our website and all our social media, as well as the Chamber of Commerce's website. But we're supporting our local restaurants and stores that are essential businesses and they're currently open to serve. And so right now, we have 14 restaurants that are open. We have two pet stores and five food stores. And so, we want to support them. They're there to support our community. And so that information, again, is available in a variety of methods. But again, websites, social media, they'll be in our newsletter. It's on our reader board. You know, please go support our local businesses and they're there for us to support us. So thank you for staying open. The CARES Act, so the CARES Act, it's federal support. The CARES Act was approved a little more than a week ago. It includes several new programs that will directly help our residents and businesses in Corder Madara for individuals and families of the CARE Act. It provides the following on the residential side. It provides direct cash rebate of up to $1,200 per taxpayer and $500 per child. It expands eligibility for unemployment compensation. It provides an additional $600 per week to each recipient of unemployment compensation for four months. It defers student loan payments. It waives tax on seniors. It limits evictions for renters and foreclosures for homeowners. And it ensures COVID-19 testing is covered by all private insurance plans without cost sharing. The CARES Act also supports our business community. And so it's approximately a $376 billion relief package for small and medium-sized businesses. So when you think about that, currently, the town of Corder Madara has 511 businesses. Of that, 450 would meet this criteria. They bring in less than 50, what is the number? I'll go to, less than 50 million in revenue. And so, I think it's 50, I'm sorry, not 50, gosh, we'd be doing really good if that was the case. We have 450 of our businesses meet this criteria. And that criteria is basically 5 million in taxable annual sales or less in a 12-month period. So what this does is they give paycheck protection, provides loans to employees to maintain payroll. If payroll's maintained, the loan is forgiven. Emergency Economic Injury Grant provides an advance with, which does not need to be repaid of up to $10,000 within three days of applying for an economic injury disaster loan. Small Business Debt Relief Program, it provides relief, immediate relief with non-disaster loans and microloans. And then Tax Provisions provides employee retention credit for employers subject to closure or economic hardship through a refundable payroll tax for 50% of wages and delays payments of employer payroll taxes. The other thing that recently came out, it was effective April 2nd of 2020, was the Small Business Relief Payment Plans. So small business and taxpayers, those with less than 5 million in taxable annual sales can take advantage of a 12-month interest fee payment plan for up to $50,000 of sales and use tax liability. The payment plan request can be made through online services systems in coming months. And we're tracking that closely. And again, we're putting out information from three major groups in our area. So the town, the Chamber of Commerce, and also our Small Business Development Center, which is linked on our website. If you go to our website, at the top of it, there's a COVID-19 newsflash link at the top. You click on that and you'll be able to find all this information we're talking about. But one of them is from the Small Business Development Center. And Miriam, she runs it. She's a Corder Madara resident and has been a huge supporter of our business community. So please go to that. One of the other things that came out following the Governor's executive order was the Marin County Board of Supervisors approved an emergency resolution to prevent residents and business owners from being evicted because of a sudden loss of income tied to the COVID-19 pandemic. This ban is in effect county-wide in every city, town, and unincorporated area of Marin County, and it lasts until May 31st of this year unless extended by the Board of Supervisors. The resolution requires renters and leaseholders to notify their landlord within 30 days after rent is due that they are unable to pay because of financial impacts related to COVID-19. Excuse me. A landlord may seek payment of unpaid rent after the expiration of the local emergency, but may not charge late fees. The county recently completed a fact sheet and sample language for renters to use to modify their, to notify their landlords. All materials are being translated into Spanish and Vietnamese and will be available on the Marin Community Development Agency's website. And the other part of this is what we've done, both with, the town of Corder Madara is unique with our businesses. So a lot of our business owners are not the owners of the property. And so we have major landlord owners, the shopping centers, and other owners that own large swaths of property. And so we're working with them, as the town is also a property owner, to be consistent in how we handle this, and it's thoughtful. And so how we handle rents in the months of April and May, how we support our business community, how we can help them transition, not worry about rent these two months, get them and bridge their support to get these resources that they need from the federal and state level. And then really, in a thoughtful way, talk about how that's paid back or how we relieve them of those responsibilities moving forward. And so that is happening. And I'll tell you that, for the most part, we have been pretty consistent on how that's handled. I will say to the community, we've had five instances that I know of where there's been a unique situation amongst a resident or a business owner, a business owner leasing a space where they've had some misunderstandings or they needed someone to facilitate this conversation. And so staff has stepped in and helped them with that. And so we're available to you. Should you need that, please call us or email me. On the police side, sadly, when you have people that really are restricted at home, it causes a lot of issues. And unfortunately, we've started to see some of that happen. The Police Department has seen an increase in domestic violence and mental health calls. So we're extremely worried about that. And so we're working with our police staff and our communications. You may have seen a couple of next-door postings of, again, trying to give people resources to just body, spirit, mind, how to get out there and just be in a good place, how we can support you and really use some of our beautiful amenities while staying safe. So that is going on. Again, the stay-at-home order has caused a major influx of calls that have drained our resources. And so, as your town manager, I'm concerned about that. And so we're taking steps to make sure that our police are doing the work that we need them to do to protect our community and keep them safe. And again, Mike Moriarty, our Code Enforcement Officer, has been taking a lot of that on himself as well. We've also had the first two deaths from the coronavirus, one in Santa Rosa and one down south. Two officers contracted it while on duty, separate calls, obviously. But they were the first known deaths in our state. And it had a ripple effect amongst our public safety staff, I'll tell you that. And so, even though they're the tip of the storm and we expect them to be there for us when we, when we need them, just know that there's huge stressors going on with them as well. And so I want to recognize both police and fire for what they do. It's a difficult job and I just really appreciate, you know, and think we have the best police and fire department around. We also have three firefighters that were exposed to someone who had the virus. And we had to make sure the three of them were quarantined for the proper periods. And from what I hear, all three should be okay and we should have them back soon. Something else from one of our local businesses, I want to give them recognition. Marin Suites Hotel has offered to house public safety and healthcare personnel that may need to be quarantined from their families while they're doing the job of keeping us all safe. And so they've opened that up to the region as one of five places people can go amongst public safety and healthcare and so healthcare personnel. And I just want to give them recognition and major kudos for supporting our public safety team. So to the new council members, our new mayor and our council, some have been through this before. I want to congratulate you and welcome you to the budget conversation. Because one of the things, this isn't the most important conversation, right? It's our health and safety. But this pandemic has never been seen before. And what I think it has just positioned us for is probably the worst economic downturn that we'll have ever experienced. We talked a lot over the last three years of what happened. Our worst economic downturn in the last 40 years was in the late 2000s. And it was over a five-year period where we sustained approximately a $2.5 million deficit. And we had no general fund and zero, nothing in the general fund and zero reserves. Councilmember Ravazio speaks about this a lot in some of our council meetings. He lived through it. That was the worst one known to us. With the Finance Committee and the work of the council over the last three years, we never thought this was going to happen. We never thought about a pandemic to this level and what it would mean to us. But we absolutely thought about fiscal prudence. And it's the number one issue of the council and the direction that they've given staff over the last three years led by Daria Carrillo, our Finance Director. And so we talked a lot about it, that we can take the worst economic downturn over a five-year period, $2.5 million, and we can sustain it times three without ever talking about eliminating services, freezing positions, laying off employees, and stopping the important work of our 20-year plan of infrastructure projects. So we're about to get tested on that. And so, briefly, and we're not really positioned for this meeting to have it, but I want to give you a basic overview, what's coming on April 20th, because that's where we'll start to have a better idea financially where we're headed and have council give staff direction on which way we want to go. But what I'll tell you is we're prepared for this. We've really looked out 28 months. So 28 months, basically from last month through this fiscal year, through the next fiscal year of 2020, 2021. through the next fiscal year of twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one and twenty-one, twenty-two. We've looked at twenty-eight months. And really, we're going to look at a worst case scenario for us. And this is what we're going to plan for. So so preliminarily, we're preparing for an approximate one point six million dollar shortfall in lost revenues for this fiscal year. That's primarily from our sales tax, our transient occupancy tax as the hotels are closed, and construction permits for this fiscal year. Staff's working on offsetting these losses for this year by freezing spending in certain areas and by an approximate four to five hundred thousand surplus in revenues that we were enjoying before the pandemic hit to offset this. So what we're hoping to do is have that shortfall be in the nine hundred thousand dollar range or less. Staff's projecting an economic downturn. I don't think it's a shock to anyone for fiscal years twenty, twenty-one and twenty-one, twenty-two, but we'll focus first on the slow ramp up. If if the health order is lifted sometime in June, let's say, and that's give or take, but let's just assume that for this conversation. And potentially a similar order occurs sometime in the next fiscal year. Let's say, you know, it's lifted, but we have a slow ramp up economically and tourism wise. And then let's say we get into the winter months and we have a similar shutdown. We believe that would be an approximately two point four million dollar impact in revenues for the next fiscal year. And for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, it's just really difficult to determine that. But we do see a continued economic uncertainty. What I've done is I basically projected worst case scenario of a four to five million dollar loss in revenues over the twenty-eight month period. If that were to happen, again, with some of the steps we're taking now to offset costs this fiscal year with taking the two million dollars that we have from the surplus enjoyed last year, that's currently in our general fund. And the two point five million dollar emergency reserve that we have in place within the sales tax measure, we currently have thirteen million dollars in that account. Two point five has been set aside informally for any emergencies or disasters that should happen. I think this qualifies as one. We would be able to use those funds to offset this and continue business, I'll just say as usual, but it's not as usual, but we would be able to continue all services and our our, you know, all of our capital improvement projects moving forward. But again, this is high level conversation, but I want to let the community know that we've planned for this. Not again, a virus such as this, but for a fiscal, a major fiscal impact. And so the measures that the Finance Committee and the council put in place over the last three years were positioned to meet those challenges. What I'll also say is that we staff is also preparing for the loss of any property tax or sales tax postponements. There's been a lot of conversation at the governor's level of postponing property tax. I'm told from the governor's office that that will not happen for this current due date. But there is discussion at the state level potentially for the next round of property tax. It could be postponed as well as sales tax for smaller businesses. Ultimately, the monies would come back to the local jurisdictions, but there's a transition of one that would happen. And again, as you can tell, if there's a five million dollar potential economic hit to us, and then we lose these additional funds for a period of time, it'll have an impact to us. And so staff is working with the League of California Cities. Nancy has been outstanding, supporting us with that from the League of California Cities, our rep. And so the county managers meet three times a week. And so we're now having those discussions with her and Senator McGuire's office to make sure that any relief that is given to residents, the state also considers relief and bridges for local jurisdictions such as ours that are one third sales tax based. Again, I'm going to close now on the administrative side. I just want to, again, I think using technology through this has been a gift. And I think it's gonna such as our our council meetings moving forward, we're going to be able to engage our community more that can't make it to our meetings. But also there's been a lot of discussion. Susie Beatty brought it up and she's right. You know, let's do a virtual state of the town. And maybe it's not our normal state of the town address. It's kind of like what we're talking about now. And to have that in a similar mode like we are tonight in our council meeting, and then off of that have a number of single topic discussion conversations, and then they'll probably be focused around budget. But to be able to engage our community in a thoughtful way. And so I'm really excited about that. I know a communications plan with the council is important this coming year. We'll talk about it at the April twentieth retreat. And I also just want to say that the Town Hall Project, there's been a lot of discussion over it. The Town Hall Project is an important project, just like with everything else within our infrastructure. Your town manager strongly believes it. I jumped on the table for it. But we also recognize you have to prioritize. And so one of the things I'm recommending to staff now, and I'll recommend to the council at our April twentieth retreat is to continue with the discussion of the design review process for our building. We have momentum. The community is engaged and I would like to continue that. But once that design review is complete, I'm recommending that we put it to the side. We have a three year period to talk about that project. Once the design review process is done. And I think we need about twelve to eighteen months to see where we are to exactly figure out our budget and how we're going to pay for it, because that is forever changed as well. We are not going to supplant the capital improvement projects that we promised our community over the next five years. So there'll be some discussion for it, but I think it's important to still complete that design review process. But again, that will be a policy decision of the council. I recognize that. And I wanted to put it on your radar and the community's radar to understand what we are and aren't doing moving forward. And so with that, I'll stop. Happy to answer any questions that you may have. And I'm sorry, there's just a lot, lots been going on with this over the last ten days. So. Thank you.
Wow, Todd, that was a fantastic, really information dense report there. That was probably the best manager report I've ever heard. That was a lot of really useful information. I'd imagine council members probably have some questions for you, so we will take those at this time. Are there any questions for Todd on his incredible report? No? All right. Well, I guess you were that thorough. Excellent. In that case, we will move on to council member reports. Are there any council members who have anything to report?
I have, just briefly.
Yeah, go ahead.
We had a Twin City Disaster Prep Council virtual meeting yesterday. We had over twenty people on Zoom and nothing really substantial report other than that they're ready and willing and able to help. They're trying to stay in touch with their neighbors to find out if people need help, but they continue to be involved and they're ready if need be.
Great. Thank you, Bob. David, did I see a hand go up?
Yes. With respect to Marin Clean Energy, there are a couple of things to report. There was a technical committee meeting last Thursday and a board meeting on Friday. And there were a couple of important actions, I think, that are of interest to folks. One is that first of all, Solano County has been added as an additional service area for MCE. So they're growing still. A second is that their public finance rating, their their credit rating has gone up a notch and improved still further. So they are investment grade. But the most interesting one from my perspective is that they've just let a three million dollar contract to an engineering firm called TRC, which includes a couple of other entities for the sake of expanding projects in community resilience and critical entity resilience and energy storage to roll through PSPS power outages in cleaner fashion. Related to that, there are a few other activities that are related to that out in the world in general, but that's the one that we're directly engaged with. We've been asked to be to consider cosigning with other communities in Marin, two different bills, which I would like in a future time to discuss, one of them from Senator Dodd thirteen, fourteen, that it's concerns Community Energy Resilience Act. And there are a number of people from MCCMC who are beginning to talk about this issue of community resilience and microgrids as a very important topic this year that we can't drop. And so these conversations are happening by Zoom and other electronic means. So I just wanted to make sure that, keeping up on those and would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, David. If nobody else has anything to report, then I will just say briefly, I've been working with staff and with local volunteer organizations recently, trying to get this hotline up and running that we've established. So for any members of the public watching, that number is four one five nine nine one four oh four oh. That line is manned by town staff during business hours, Monday through Friday. And this is a line that you should call both if you are an at risk resident and you need help with something like getting groceries or medicines or essential supplies, or if you just want to check in and learn more, if you just want somebody to chat with. You should also call this number if you are looking to volunteer and put your name down so that staff has you on record as somebody that they can dispatch to go help out at risk residents. So again, that number is four one five nine nine one four oh four oh. And I just want to give a huge shout out to Todd and staff for getting this whole system up and running on such short notice. I also want to applaud them. You know, three hundred and forty-six seniors that we've, you know, that we've got our eye on, that we're reaching out to individually. That is so impressive. I don't know of another town that's actually having staff go and, you know, personally check in on residents. So that's an incredible effort. Really proud of you guys on that. I also think this mailer is a great idea because that's how we reach, you know, there we've got three hundred and forty-six at risk residents that we're reaching out to, but there are thousands in Corder Madera. So the mailer is really the strategy to reach everybody. So I think that's fantastic. Really impressed with your guys' work. Last thing I want to highlight is just, you know, kind of what Todd was hitting on. You know, the town is in quite impressive financial position right now. There's no, you know, there's no city in Marin that I'd rather be mayor of. But we should all be bracing ourselves for the hard decisions that are going to be coming in the future. And I think especially Bob with his experience during the last financial downturn is going to be an invaluable asset to the council on this. So I know that we're going to work together really well on these issues. And I know that together with our incredible staff, we're going to be able to make it through this. The last thing I will say is I just want to extend a warmest welcome to our new council members.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I may suggest that you go ahead and ask for public comment one more time, given the breadth of the reports as well as the difficulty some apparently had earlier in the meeting with giving public comment.
Excellent idea, Teresa. Thank you. Rebecca, is there any public comment at this time?
And I would suggest that would be the items in the update as well as any matters not on the agenda.
Agreed. Yes, we'll take public comment on anything right now. We're going back to open time for public comment.
Okay. Giving everyone a moment to raise their virtual hands if they want to. I'm not seeing any public comments at the public comment to tcml.org address. Roy Wolford has a question for Todd.
Excellent.
Let me see if he is still on. Roy, I am unmuting you.
I am online. Okay, Todd. Question, going back to the landscaping maintenance. Were the complaints primarily or all were contractors and gardeners coming in and maintaining properties and landscape? Or was it a combination of the owner doing the, you know, the landscaping and gardening?
Good question, Roy. So it's a combination of a lot. So it was landscapers and gardeners coming in to do the work. Some were residents. Some had to do with the noise level. So the gas power leaf blowers, as you know, the blowers now, gas powered leaf blowers are not allowed as of March. And so there's the noise factor. So there was a combination of those things. Out of them, if I had to give you a percentage of the the work that we've actually shut down, when you go through kind of the the matrix of making a decision, if it's a health and safety, we probably slowed down about sixty percent of those and allowed about forty.
Okay, yeah, good. Because my concern is, is that if we shut down everything too far and we get too many complaints, I'm hearing and reading about now there's recommendations of not doing, not going grocery shopping, or going out and picking up our food at the restaurants. If we go too far with this as a society, everything will be shut down. And we talk about a quick recovery, that won't happen. And will we, will we ever recover? Well, the United States is a pretty powerful place and there's great people here. But we've got to be very careful. And I hope that the the town council members will work closely with the county to start getting clarification. And for example, a gardener comes in and does work. They're maintaining social distancing for the most part. I mean, I haven't come within, we have the the old joke, I wouldn't touch a person with a ten foot pole. Well, they're not even close to being within ten feet. So I think we need to, as a society, really be very careful and not get too restrictive, not shut down the grocery markets. And by the way, those people in the food industry and the grocery clerks right on the front line, they're heroes as well as the medical people, as well as the fire and police. I mean, I give them all huge credit. So I ask again, the council to really work closely with the county and make sure they give very clear messages as to what to do with the social distancing in our interactions as a society and what businesses can stay open. Because businesses, they're like one person should still be able to be open. And we shouldn't shut every business down. In the term, we're shutting everything down that's not essential. I mean, we're going to have to take a lifetime to define what's essential and what's not. So that's my message to the council. Todd, thank you for doing a tremendous job. And just a little levity, I would like to ask, are you having fun yet? Thank you. Take care, everyone, and stay healthy.
Okay.
Rebecca, is there any other public comment?
Yes, I have muted Roy. And I see a hand raised from Pat Revazio.
Great. And also, I don't know, we're doing the, we're doing the three minute limit on public comment, right?
We are.
Okay, sorry.
And I will acknowledge Pat and as I can. Okay.
I didn't really raise, mean to raise my hand. I was just trying to figure out how to raise my hand for future meetings. So.
You are successful.
I do want to say thank you all for your service during this very difficult time. Todd, your report made it clear just how you are a juggler in a major circus routine and you are doing a great job. So thank you all so much for your work and and Rebecca for pulling together this amazing technical achievement. It was fabulous. So thank you and good night from me. Bye. My hand's going down now, now that I know how to raise it.
Thank you, Pat. All right, Rebecca, is there any other public comment?
We have no more virtual hands raised.
All right. Do you want to check the email one last time?
I will refresh the email one last time. No additional emails received and no additional questions asked in the chat bar.
All right. Well, then, that concludes tonight's agenda and this meeting is adjourned.
Great job, Mayor Beckman. Great job.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Bye bye.
Bye.